Evening, everybody. Third night in a row we're here for Rockport Budget Review. It's Thursday, February 21st. A couple of announcements first. The meeting next Tuesday, which will be the engineer coming in to talk to us about the intersection of parking connected with the library. That shows on the sheet as a dinner meeting. We will not have dinner for that meeting that evening. And it's up to the group whether we would start at either 6:00 or 6:30 for that meeting. And it'll be just the one topic, so I would... What's the sense of the group as to when you want to start that? 6:00 or 6:30?
Six.
When do we get done?
When we get done.
I like the way you think.
I would guess it would be an hour, hour and a half or so. I think we'll probably go for, you know, a half an hour presentation, then there'd be some questions about that.
I'm neutral.
Can we do 6:00?
6:00?
Everyone has to do 6:00.
I'm hearing 6:00. Okay, so...
I'll be late for it. I get out of work on Tuesday at 6:00.
Okay.
You don't need me for that stuff.
Okay, so we'll do that meeting at 6 o'clock then, and no dinner that night, so, you know, we won't have to worry about coming early to eat dinner.
Back to lunch.
Yeah. Well, hopefully it won't be terribly long, so you can either eat beforehand or eat a late dinner afterwards. On this evening's schedule, because Bill Napower was unable to be here, planning and community development was up first, but because he was unable to be here, we're going to move that to the end of the evening rather than the start, so that the other department heads can perhaps get out here a little bit earlier. So we will begin with the general assistance budget, which is on page 144. We have our general assistance administrator here, and Rick, you're on.
Okay. Thank you, everyone, for the third night of fun-filled night. Hopefully, we won't be here until 10:00. But this budget here is a $200 increase over last year. All of the items that are shaded in gray that are in the budget, and you'll see the same thing in the library budget.
And assessing.
And assessing. Items that are shaded in gray, they have a revenue source from another place. So this one, 70% of all the items that are shaded in gray are revenue... We get revenue back from the state, reimbursed from the state at a rate of 70%. So this budget has a $13,000 revenue, $13,055 revenue line. This budget, you know, there's not a lot we can do with it, because what it is, it's what it is. We're required to pay whatever it takes. You know, our job is to try and budget what we think that's going to cost. But if we go over, we go over. That's one area we're permitted and allowed to go over budget on is general assistance. So, any questions?
I have a comment. I noticed under the deputy GA administrative stipend 2205, that person has apparently gotten a higher certification as the GA administrator and was given a 3% raise for that, but that was cut. And I'm just wondering what sort of message that sends to our employees if they make the effort to get another level of certification, another level of education, and that's not rewarded. So I would put that back in.
There was a 3%... There's a 3%...
Right, but it was originally 10, apparently, but the deputy, the department head said 11.
Everybody went back to 3%.
Right, but this person earned an extra certification.
Across the board, everybody went back to 3%.
But I guess the question is, did that person earn this certification during this year, so that's a new certification?
I...
Yes.
Not against.
Yes.
We both went and got certified.
Okay.
So that... So what we did was we put in 3%, which is the normal raise, and then an additional 7% because we both took the classes to become certified.
So is that like in a contract, or just for the layman here, is that in a contract or some job description or somewhere?
No, it's not, unfortunately, but...
And both for the members of the Budget Committee who may not be familiar, the GA administrator and the deputy GA administrator, it's an additional duty. There are other full-time employees of the town who do other things, and they take on this additional duty as part of their job, and so the stipend is above and beyond their salary.
Where does the donations that we receive from, I can think of probably at least two people, that goes towards this type of thing, where does that show up?
It doesn't. If they... Diane can speak to it, but if they don't qualify under normal guidelines, that would be reimbursed by the state. She has the option to help them through those donation accounts.
Yeah, but I mean, is there a place where we know how much is in there?
Yeah, it's in your donation page, it's in the front of the budget.
In the front? All right.
Because it technically doesn't qualify as general assistance.
Page 64.
It's good to know whether we got $50,000 in there or $2,000. I didn't, apparently missed it.
With regard to the stipend, was that 7% increase on just the stipend, or was it on the entire wage for the employee?
There's no wage. It's just a stipend.
Just on the stipend.
I'm saying on the other, other wage.
No.
No.
No, just on the stipend.
Just on the stipend, yeah.
I have a quick question.
The additional training, the monies for that training course was provided through the town. It's not like the folks used their own resources to get the certification.
No, but it's very little amount to take the classes.
Stevie?
Diane, what about time, your time in taking, you said, what, six weeks was the course?
No, you have to take three different courses to become certified.
And it's all done during work, their work time?
So your work hour, I mean, the work hours from this, from your other duties?
Yeah, it's during the day. Yeah, so I would have to take off from work to take the classes.
Question for Rick. Actually, this is in your executive summary on page 21. It says that the key budget issue for general assistance, the need for public general assistance has increased due to the current economic conditions of the region and the country. Well, with unemployment rate, you know, down to almost 4%, and the economy booming and everything, I don't quite understand where you're coming from there.
It is, it's strange. We do still see a fairly significant number of people. There are, in this area, Midcoast Maine, Rockport, and Camden particularly, there's people that have means, and then there's people that don't. And when they don't, they really don't. And there's a big difference there, you know, and it's, I don't want to say, but it's been fairly quiet lately. But typically, typically what happens is it happens later, and it's like next month and the month after is when we get hit with a lot, because people's cash is running out, they're running out of cash, they've been trying to keep up, and then they run out of cash. And it's typically also when they're electric, when CMP is allowed to shut electricity off.
Yes, in the spring.
In the springs.
But wouldn't it be more accurate, then, to say that the increase has been due more to perhaps a specific population in town rather than due to current economic conditions in the region and the country?
Possibly.
For the majority of them that come in are homeless.
I've got a question, too, on the... So would it be neater to have your stipend for both parties be rolled into their wage? Because if you're doing one job as your primary job, and then you go off and do your other job, and you're getting your stipend for it, you're not doing your primary job. So wouldn't it look neater if you just put both of them into one salary?
Well, it depends. If, the way it work, has worked, is the GA administrator has been the town manager's executive assistant. It does not necessarily have to be that way.
No, because it's been brought up in the past. I was just wondering if it were just rolled into one, so that way nobody can say, well, while you're doing this during the day, you're not doing that, so how can you be paid for that while you're doing?
Well, I think the issue is, we would still have to show in this budget that cost of the GA administrator, whether it was one salary or not. And I don't know how your paychecks look, if it's just a separate line item. You only get one check, I think, but I don't know how that works.
Yeah, well, the stipend comes in with separate check.
Right, okay. And I'm perfectly willing, because of the attainment of the certification, to advocate for the higher number on these stipends. It's a small amount of money, and it's us, us as the board, saying, we appreciate you doing that. And that's just me talking.
I totally agree with that.
You're talking 300...
And I thank Helen for bringing it up, because I totally agree with her about the message that it sends to our employees if we don't.
Should you put it in writing, though, for the future, or just have a policy to, I mean, just, you know, it would be the same for everybody, so it's not so much a discretionary decision.
Yep.
Well, I think in general...
To be fair, I encourage them to go and take the training. So it wasn't something that they decided to do on their own and just go out and get certified, because I encouraged them to do that, to get certified. And it is important for them to be certified. And so it's not something that they did on their own.
Yeah, no, I'm not against the, I think it's good. I'm just saying to put it in writing, so then in the future, then there's no ambiguity about it.
Right.
That's what I'm saying.
And just to get some clarity, maybe, we have to have a GA person certified in town. We had been using Camden because we lost Stacy.
Briefly, yeah.
So as much as I would encourage you to continue encouraging folks to attain these things, it was more because we needed it, not...
Yeah, and...
For other reasons. I mean, we didn't have a GA-certified individual, and it was necessary for town operations to have someone.
I don't believe it, I don't think it's necessary that somebody be certified.
It is not required, but it's important that you do get certified, because you learn so much in the classes that it's really hard to do the job without that knowledge, so...
Is it a DHS?
And isn't that a job, and isn't that a job that by, I think I read recently in an MMA reference, that that job has to be available 24/7?
Yeah. Yeah.
So I could get called at any point in time. And for that, you get paid $1,000 or something for that?
The history of it is that I don't think there've been very many middle-of-the-night calls.
It does happen.
But every once in a while, yeah.
Yeah, and we want to not give her the $100. What they would do is they would contact the police department, and then whoever's ever on duty for the police officer would contact me.
Do you have, is there a stipend for your obligation for the position? For your cellphone, is there a stipend?
I get $10.
A month? Stevie?
No, I was just, sidebar to Doug's comment, because there've been a number of stories lately, and I think the most recent one in the Bangor paper, about the economy. And there is a great puzzlement with our AIO in Lakeland and the medical clinic, which our new church is closely affiliated with. There is a tremendous uptick. And there was just a story that 70% of people are three car payments behind. And it's puzzling, because everybody says how great the economy is, and there's low unemployment. But the whole point has been that a lot of the low unemployment are people who are making subsist, they're not making a working wage. So I think it's a little bit what Doug had said, the idea of a certain population. But, I mean, this is happening nationally, and there's no real answer for it.
Part of it is, they've been on unemployment for so long, they come off, they come off the list, and they don't get counted as unemployed. They, you know, they get missed in the unemployment rating.
And they also, when they take these low-paying jobs, if they've been on any type of subsistence, like childcare credits and things, they're making enough money to lose that childcare and some of the benefits that they get. And the same thing with the heating assistance. But they're, they make too much money to get that help anymore, but they don't make enough money to get the services.
Pay the bill.
So, I'm sorry, that was...
But they can come in for an emergency assistance.
Right, I know.
Yes.
Any further...
Just a quick comment. I noticed the same phrasing that Doug noticed, and it's not specific to this. I noticed it in several other places in the packet, and it's just maybe, it's not really a budget issue, it may be a matter of form. It's likely not true that the economy is bad, therefore causing challenges on our budget. But there are some, there are some issues that are creating challenges for our budget. So it's just a point that I think is a weird line, because it does create some confusion. But other than that, I mean, it's not really our Budget Committee's, you know, in our purview.
Okay. Any further questions on general assistance? Okay, if not, assessing is next, page 128. And we have Carrie here, and Rick, your introduction, Rick.
Let's see. This budget is down about $26,000 due to the fact that we had two items in the budget last year that are not in the budget this year. There was a server that was there, and the aerial photography that we had in the budget last year, remember, we had a lot of conversation about the aerial photography. That's not in the budget this year. So that, those items came out, and so the budget is down about $26,000. We need, you should keep in mind that the, there's also a $71,000 reimbursement from the town of Camden, if you look down in the revenue line. And again, all of the, all of the things, the items that are shaded in gray, all of those items are items that we share the expense with the town of Camden. And we share that expense 50/50.
For some of it, it's important to note, some of them, it's a portion of, because there's another employee in this department, too, so it doesn't work out to be 50/50.
Fifty/50, and some of the benefits, yeah.
Okay, any questions here? The 2205, that line, is that the 20 hours that we were talking about moving somewhere else?
No.
No.
This is separate?
There's this split between assessing and planning.
Another employee split. Yeah, this is assessing and planning.
Okay, thank you. Owen?
Thank you. Line 5605, books, periodical subscription. I'm assuming they came out with a new revision, because you hadn't been using any...
It's from Marshall and Swift valuation.
Okay.
We haven't had a new one since 2004.
And we can anticipate maybe not. I mean, I want to have it for your job, but we likely won't have...
Probably every five years.
Okay, cool.
Something like that. And we're going to share that with Camden.
And then 3920, the training and education, good reason for a bump up?
Yeah, but actually, we bumped it back down.
Yeah, that was supposed to get bumped back down.
The new number is 1348.
1348?
Yeah.
That's one of the numbers that was included in the PowerPoint.
Oh, okay, yeah, that's right.
That, and if I can keep going, 3105 also came down. That's 1150.
That's right, I remember that from the PowerPoint.
And the reason for that is, there was a convention I was planning on going to by AAO in Niagara Falls, so I put that in the budget. It's never been close enough for me to go to one, and I never have wanted to do the expensive air travel and that sort of thing. After we did the budget, they announced they're going to be in Boston 2022. So I took out Niagara Falls in favor of Boston in the future. That's some long-term planning.
You bet.
Niagara Falls is fun, though.
Yeah.
I'm listening to you.
The two things that I had talked to Carrie about is something that, Rick, we went through last year about the agreements. Have they been signed for both Carrie and Caitlin with Camden?
I believe, didn't we put in there that they, that they're automatically...
I was telling Mark, I remember us taking care of it, but I couldn't tell you that I said this in the truth.
Yeah, because at the time, it was only a yearly thing, and they were outdated. But, and the other question, I guess, is related to 3060 and the professional services. Is there an anticipation of how much longer we will be utilizing Camden's assistant to come over? I mean, are we going to be moving towards our own self-sufficient work, or...
I mean, I don't know. Carrie and I haven't talked about this at length, but the goal was to have a department, an assessing department, that was serving both towns, that was well-balanced with staffing, that could do both towns. And I don't know if you've given that any thought, you know, what the...
As far as the timeline, I have none. I mean, I'm really pleased how the department is working. I would be loath to upset it. But I have, you know, the current staffing level, we all work pretty hard, but we get it done. We do it well. So I haven't been thinking along, I mean, I...
You know, I'm a little stingy. I mean, I would much rather encourage our people to be able to do that job and pay our people rather than pay Camden to do something for us. So that's where I'm going with that. I mean, I understand how it's been working, but I was wondering if there's an end means to...
I mean, you know, I mean, without having thought about it, I mean, as far as formally goes, if I had my druthers, we'd have a department that served both towns right down the middle, 50/50. I don't see that happening, but, you know, so, because I think it works, I think it's working very well. I think, I think we're getting along with fewer personnel the way we're doing it now than if each town had their own department. You've got some obvious cost savings from the same methodology, right? Right, right. We have the same software.
And you seem to think that there is a certain value, hard to put a finger on it, but you're having access to the valuations in Camden, because it gives us a broader comparison.
Absolutely. I wish I'd had it years ago.
Yeah.
And lastly, on that one, the 9% represents, from 15 to 17, that represents, is that the...
Where are you?
Still on the same 30/60.
Well, that, I believe that represents the increase that Camden approved, correct?
I think so. Let's look in the...
The only reason I ask is because if, yeah, all right.
That's, she got a pay increase in Camden last year, and I think that, that...
That's just about the whole difference.
All right. How much, what percentage of her time do we use?
20%.
20%, so one day a week, roughly, so, okay.
A day a week, basically, right.
And you didn't get a raise?
I did not. I had tried to give it to Hannah. Hannah, speaking of, point made earlier, I asked Hannah to get her certification. She did.
On the first try?
No.
Oh, on second try, that's...
Second try, right. And I'd like to reward her for it.
Thank you, Carrie. That's exactly where I was going as soon as I had my turn. I mean, based on the conversation that we just had, I think that, I think, I think that, while it's one thing to say we're holding employees to a 3% raise, it's another thing when they go out and they, they have, you know, taken courses, tests to improve, you know, what they're doing, getting additional certifications. And here, she's become a state-certified assessor, and I think that that should be reflected in her salary.
I agree.
I don't think it's fair to just give her a 3% raise.
I agree, and that's why I was willing to give her my raise.
And in part...
I think that, good for you, and that's really nice, and I think that's...
And in part, Deborah, that's where I was going with, with what we're paying for the service over there. We now have, so I was trying to find...
I just got there quicker and more direct.
I was trying to find a way to take a piece of that and give it here and still have some of that.
Yeah, well, whatever, I, yeah.
I love where your heart's at, that you're willing to give up your own raise, but I would, I don't know about that one.
Yeah.
For the select board, I mean, the job you're doing, your willingness to work with one unit for both towns, I mean, you're already, you're providing substantial savings, and I don't know, if it's 3% across the board, it should be 3% across the board for everybody, and even the nice guys that want to give up their own raise.
Yeah, I agree with that, too.
This is where our money comes from.
Yes.
I have a question, Karen.
Yeah.
3026, web hosting. I did read the notes on the side, but I'm still not clear.
Okay, so what happened was, when we had all that, those attacks last year that took our computer system down, at the time, we were planning on buying a new server to host the assessing data internally. After that happened, we felt a lot less secure about our data and decided to use their web hosting for us. So instead of buying, so we had around 8,000 budgeted last year to buy the server and set it up. The web hosting costs six, so we went and did that instead, and now we're budgeting for the web hosting.
And words, it said assisted mass appraisal.
Where are you at?
The descriptions on 3026, 6,000 computer-assisted mass appraisal hosting.
That's my assessing, yeah.
Okay, I get it now. It's the hosting service that we're paying for, it's not a newer mass appraisal.
No, we pay for that separately.
And the map Geo one is one that's paid annually for utilizing...
It is annually, and that's what's available to the public, yeah.
Did you get your question answered? I guess I didn't. I'd like to ask, maybe I'm going to try this again. On the, on sharing the Camden person, is it, is it possible that with the new certification for Hannah, that you don't need that 20% anymore, or...
Not really, and I'm a little uncomfortable talking personnel, but...
I know, I know, I, yeah, but...
I hope you can trust in me.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We're using our resources well.
Okay, I just felt that I had to phrase that, considering that there is this change.
Understood, understood.
Gotcha, okay.
Okay. Any further questions on assessing? Okay, thank you, Carrie.
Thank you.
Moving right along, harbor, we already did. Man, we're going to get out of here early tonight. Oh, library.
You jinxed us. You jinxed us.
Page 218.
Really, because it is a library building.
This is the library budget, and the items shaded in gray here are paid for by income from the library endowment, which is controlled by the library committee, so they don't, there's an offsetting revenue for that, which shows up on page 220. And then the rest of the items of town is responsible for the personnel costs and the physical building.
So one of the items, this budget shows a $12,000 increase, due largely to the addition of two more hours per week in your part-time staffing, correct?
Yes, that's the, that's line, let's see, 2205. And the increase is actually only, it's about $2,484. That's for two extra hours a week, and then the 3% increase on that.
And then the other thing is, there's another increase. I mean, most of these numbers are pretty static. The other area is our lease, rental for the library building that we're in now, at the end of three years, it had an escalator in it where it allowed the rent to go up, whatever taxes went up. So there was an escalator that allowed him to recoup any tax increases, so that's figured in there.
When does that lease run out?
It's, it runs, it's an annual rollover. It rolls over, yeah. I can't remember what...
Because, I mean, if we're not going to be until August, maybe it runs out in July.
No, I've already talked to him about...
I think we moved in in the winter, I know that.
Okay, no, I just didn't want to be caught, hooked on for a year when...
No, and he knows that. He's working with us about when we're going to get, need to get out.
I believe we, the lease happened in October, and then we moved in December.
Yeah, that seems to be about right. So that'll work out really well.
And he's aware. I've spoken to Stu a couple times.
I make the same comment I made on other department budgets about 3006, the cleaning service, where we were talking about that increase, limiting that to the 3%.
How big is the endowment now? I mean, that's 85,000, that's a good income.
Yeah, the endowment, well, the endowment has taken a substantial hit over the last year and a half, but that's mostly because it's been funding the pre-work for the bond and the fundraising, you putting the money in to get a additional, you know, a professional fundraiser. That, the foundation is now up on its own, running, so we're not funding that to the same level that we were. And they've donated a lot of money just towards the building, towards the fundraising of the building. They just did $150,000 donation two weeks ago?
Yeah.
Yeah, and then, yep, and then before that, they donated...
80,000.
80,000, which is the seed money to do all the pre-work, to get us, you know, to help the architects to do all that stuff.
That counts toward the 2 million, those amounts?
No.
Well, yeah, it sort of does.
Yes, yes and no.
The engineering did.
Yes.
The engineering does, because that's getting paid, you know, prepaid, but the fundraising The engineering does, because that, that's getting paid, you know, prepaid, but the fundraising piece is not in there.
Yeah, that's in the foundation's two million that they're raising.
But the hundred and fifty thousand that they donated is part of, as far as the foundation's two million.
So like, is this eighty-five, like, earnings, or, or, I mean, it may not be consistent in the future.
So, so that eighty-five that you're seeing, that is the money that we pay back to the town. So the way that it works is Megan pays all the bills, and then the library committee meets once a month, and they write out a warrant, and that warrant covers all of those bills that I had paid from the, the lines in gray here, the operating costs.
But I think what Jared might be asking, Ben, is, is the eighty-five totally earnings from the endowment?
No, no, you wouldn't see, that wouldn't be on the budget. The endowment right now is sitting about eight hundred, eight hundred and twenty-two thousand. The earnings on that, I don't know what those are right now. I mean, it was, it was nine hundred thousand two weeks ago. So we, we're going to be meeting with our fund manager in April, so we can talk all through that. You can come to that if you want.
I've seen the portfolio before. I was just curious if it was all coming from that, but it's more of a reimbursement.
Yeah, it's a reimbursement. It's not, it's not funds coming from the endowment paid to the town.
Keeping on the theme of the three percent, what about twenty-two oh five?
That's the increase in hours.
It was just hours, not every, not a percent.
It is, it's the three percent, and then the increase on hours makes it look like seven point six percent.
And-
Because I had the same question.
Just go over the, the reason we need those extra hours.
Basically, everybody stepped up a lot, and with the, what's going on, I'm not in the building as much. I'm just not there. I'm at meetings. I'm at the design team meeting. I'm at a lot of other meetings involved in getting the building built and doing the fundraising. At the same time, we've upped our game in programming, so basically, all the other full-time staff is sort of trying to get out of the building or do other things, so a modest two extra hours a week could really alleviate some of the stress put on us to stay in the building and, and do what we have to there. Just sort of staff the desk.
Owen?
Thank you. Thirty-six oh six, building repair and maintenance. I know it's a leased building, so certain things are on-
On us.
On us. Certain things are on them. You know, building maintenance is an important thing. It's odd with this one, because it's not our assets, so are you comfortable with the?
Yeah, there's, I don't think there's a lot coming up that would really go over that. I mean, we put a lot of money into that building, unfortunately, when, over the years, in the beginning, when we came in. I think we can probably coast through the next year with that amount. I mean, we don't want to put money into it if we can't help it.
Right.
And I think, I think we'll be okay. There's one door in the back that we might need to work on, but if we don't have to, we won't. And other than that, I, I think we'll be okay. Yeah, we did some work on the furnace, you know, of course, we put in the air conditioning.
Not to dampen the party or anything, but you're really going to have to have your soothsayer crystal wall out for next year.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Because you're not going to know-
We're not going to know what's going on. Yeah, next year, when we do the budget, it's going to be wildly different.
Yep.
And I've already talked to the library committee about that portion of it, their, well, their portion of it, which will probably be most what, what goes up. I don't think the town's portion should really skyrocket in any way, shape, or form next year when we move, well, when we move into the building halfway through.
We'll lose some rent payments.
Yeah, we'll lose some rent payments.
Thirty-seven thousand bucks a year.
But most of the operating costs associated with the new building should come out of the endowment, not the town's.
Well, that's, that's another thing with, when we handle a building. I mean, I know, you know, with the cleaning, you were talking about sixty-five versus seventy-five, or whatever that jump was, to make it seventy-eight hundred. But next year, that ought to be-
That should go up.
That should go up.
That should. The building is much bigger. Yeah.
And we need to keep it clean.
Yes. Yeah. That's about the only one that I can think that'll really jump up that first year. I mean, there will be a punch list of weird little things to get done, and we'll have to figure it out. You know, it's a new building. It's going to be a new building.
Right.
Yeah, elevator, elevator maintenance and inspections will be the, the big one. We'll, we'll talk about that, I guess, next year.
Hopefully, we can get them to do it the same day they come here.
But the library committee might take that on. We've already talked about that.
Line for the library for startup contingency cost next year.
For next year, yeah.
Not try to figure out which bucket it's going to go to, but just do a single line startup cost, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good idea.
You're not going to know what and where.
Yeah, that makes a ton of sense.
And then you'll have a handle on what you're going to go into the next year with, yeah.
Would someone remind me, just for historical reference, under capital item seventy-four oh one, what were those expenses in the previous years, fifty-six, forty-three, forty thousand, that sort of?
Some of that was Dick Reed, the prior architect, and then there were some-
This was all related to-
The survey?
Yeah, the survey that was done.
Survey that we did and everything, okay.
Yeah, that's where all the money came.
Leading up to the, okay.
Right. It's been a long haul.
Yeah.
And I would add, too, to speak to Jared's question a little bit, I think the thought is, with the foundation, if they are very successful in their fundraising and raise perhaps a little more than is needed for the construction, that some of that will end up going back into the endowment in one way, shape, or form, and it hasn't been finalized or formalized yet.
Yeah, let me, let me develop that a little further, because we talked about it this morning at the library committee, and it, it builds on Jared's idea for the opera house, that, you know, we have this foundation that's been established to build the new library, but it just makes sense to begin to look ahead, how, once the new library is open, how we can use the foundation to help drive an annual campaign, fundraising, donations, and things like that, because the new library may be more expensive, and, you know, we'll have to have the endowment keeping up with those expenses. So we're looking into how to start to merge all of these operations together over the next year.
So, so what you're saying is, at the end of the year, or at the end of the build, if there's any monies left over, that would even then go into?
Well, it's up to the foundation. It's their money.
Yeah, we, I'm not talking about the actual monies. I'm just saying the process of having the foundation kind of morph into an annual campaign.
I think the town and the board will have to look at that time, at the structure of the library committee and the foundation, and see how, how do we harness those two incredible sources of energy, for lack of a better term, moving forward? And how can we, how can we do that to, to help the town, basically, or help the library?
We try to be very conservative with the endowment to make sure that it grows. That's, I mean, in the budget, we always, we're always trying to do that. I mean, this is, this is what keeps the library going, so we're very-
Well, and it's taken a pretty, as you said, a pretty big hit the last couple of years, but on the other hand, that's what the endowment is for.
If not now, when?
Yeah, exactly.
I think the thing, Ken, about that, too, and for Jared and people, before this decision was made about the one fifty or about the other funding that came from the endowment, there was close consultation with Wendy Bush and the Rob, the people who run the, the whole portfolio, and their feeling was, and they're optimists, I guess that's a good thing to be in that business, that within two years, they thought just, if things continue the way they have continued, that that would be made up in two years, that money that has been used for these things. So, I mean, it wasn't like the library looked and said, okay, let's just do a hundred and fifty thousand. It was done with the financial consultation with Putnam.
Hey, Owen?
So this is kind of a general question. I don't know if it's a question for you. It's just a curiosity.
Yeah.
A lot of individual departments have a web hosting. Is that just a smart way of doing it? Or could we actually save money if we combined all of our web hosting fees together? Do you have the same people that host yours?
No, no.
Oh.
We, we go, yeah, no, no, no. We, no, ours is through. It's called Piper Works, is who hosts our website. They do a lot of libraries. That's their, that's their bread and butter.
Okay.
But that's a pretty low fee. Yeah, it's a very low fee. I mean, it's a standard sort of website in a can. It's nothing special. And before we spent all the money out of the endowment, we were looking at doing a fairly intensive renovation of the website. That's still on the table, but that might be a year or two out now.
And Megan, trusting in your professional wisdom and knowledge and all that stuff, when I see web hosting through various budgets, they're smartly placed. There's no good efficiency that we could find by coupling things?
There, I think when the last comp plan was done, maybe Planning developed a kind of resource for businesses that we host, and I don't know how much that is actually used, so that is through a different company. But all the other, like, our town website is in the town office budget, so there's really only three places that it is, so Planning, Town Office, and Library.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else on the library budget? Okay. Library building.
Yeah.
You're not done yet, Ben.
This is just the maintenance of the, the building that is no longer there. So the only thing we have left in here is the sewer, is the sewer fee for the debt service.
That's, that's got, that's, that can't be usage. That's got to be the, yeah, the debt service fee. So the usage fee is, is not necessarily, it's a sewer bill, not the usage fee, because there's no usage.
That's the only thing we have left, because we don't have a building there anymore. There's no mowings, there's no brush cutting.
Good. Next. I have a question.
Is there, is there web hosting for the sewer?
Uh, town clerk. Page one oh four. Thank you, Ben. One oh four. Linda, you probably should come down to a microphone. Give her a minute to get here. Yeah. I don't want to start without you. Is that, you good?
I'm good.
Okay. This budget is basically static, the way it is now. It's a, it's a small six hundred dollar increase.
I think, other than, you know, rolling back all of the salaries to the three percent, the only thing I pulled out of here, I think, was a filing cabinet for six hundred dollars. But Linda's budget is usually pretty lean and mean. Doesn't have a lot of, doesn't have a lot of fluff in it, or any fluff in it. So there's, there wasn't a whole lot to, to look at here. The big thing about Linda's budget is, this is where, is, you know, three quarters of a million dollars in revenues. This is, she's the money maker, is like Mike is the money spender. She's the money maker. So the big thing here is the revenue pieces of this budget, and, I mean, because this is a tidy chunk of money that comes in outside of taxes, so.
Right. And I've done a, I do this every year.
Yeah.
If you look in your packet, there's one, it says possible revenue changes at the top in blue, and if you look at the second page, you'll see a spreadsheet here that I did for this. You'll get everybody a chance to find it. It says in big letters at the top, projection for the final five months Linda sent out this morning. We have in our budget books the excise tax numbers for the first six months of the year. She gave me the, and we have that as well. The January number, so we have seven months of data now.
You're on?
Yeah, turn, turn, turn the page, second page of that one, yeah. So just to, to go over my methodology on this, we have, starting thirteen fourteen all the way to seventeen eighteen, and then there's a whole bunch of columns over, and you see some red there. So the reds are my, my different projections. The very first column where it says at the top, same as seventeen eighteen, and all I did there was take the excise tax revenue that we got for the last five months and the last fiscal year and moved it over, and then added up to what we already have, and that gives us a total of eight sixty-seven and some change. The next column says same rate as the first seven months, so basically, I took the first seven months, divided by seven, got a monthly number, and shoved that in every month, and then you get eight seventy-six with that. The next column where it says same percentage increase as the first seven months, if you add up the first seven months of this fiscal year compared to last year, we've had four and a half percent increase in the first seven months. So then I took that four and a half percent and applied it to the, to the numbers from the last fiscal year for the last five months, and so you get that total. And then the last three columns, the last five months, I took the lowest number since thirteen fourteen, the highest number, and an average. And so you can see what the projections are here across the, the bottom.
And just like my accountant says, what do you want it to be?
And keep in mind, this is a projection for year-end this year. What we're putting in the budget is a projection for the next fiscal year. And so my suggestion, and people can feel free to weigh in on that, is right now, in the budget, we have an eight hundred and ten thousand dollar number, which, which Linda came in with. I would suggest that we bump that up to eight hundred and sixty thousand, which is a fifty thousand dollar increase from what we see right now, and if you look at the projections across here, that, that looks conservative to me. Except for the worst-case scenario, which is lowest since thirteen fourteen, we only have eight oh five at the end of this year. And that's, that, keep in mind, again, unless people stop buying new cars, and that has happened in the past. It happened after all eight.
It's slowing down now.
You see it drop off significantly, but if people stop buying new cars, then we could see a decrease. But I think if we put in eight hundred and sixty thousand for that revenue, we're, that's very conservative based on the numbers that we have for this year.
On R O one oh nine, that's the one you're looking at?
Uh, yeah.
And what, would you propose?
Eight sixty. And I would invite comment from any, especially from Linda on that one.
I think her face said it all.
I'd like to hear what Linda has to say, yeah.
I mean, it's totally up to the select board. I would never go that high. I think Rick and I are pretty even on that score. As of this month so far, with one week left, we've taken in forty thousand five hundred seventy-five dollars. All of the big-ticket ones have gone through, which is Farley's and the water company, so the biggest amounts of monies that we're going to be getting for this month have already passed through. I mean, it's, I don't know that we're going to get that much more than what we got last year. I mean, if we get another fifteen thousand in a week, we'll be lucky. So I would, I would never go that high.
This is where all the horse trading happens. A lot happens in this, this line.
Eight forty?
It's fifty, I mean, the difference here is fifty thousand for the year. When I do my budgeting work, I try to be conservative and realize that there's upside potential at the end. However, I realize that what we put here will impact our decisions in the next week or so in terms of what goes where in the horse trading activity. We, we, we do need to put in a number that we know we can take to the bank.
And you're not, you don't, you're not making a decision now. Mackenzie's making his suggestion, right?
Yeah, I mean, I make my suggestion. I've done this every year, my suggestions.
What was your percentile of accuracy?
I've been pretty good.
You've been low every year, haven't you?
I've been low every year for seven years.
Really?
Yeah. I mean, you look at the number, look at the budgeted number for, for this year was eight hundred thousand. We're going to blow past that pretty significantly, unless the, even if the world falls in, we're still at eight oh five.
Is that cyclical? I mean, your, your intake over the course of the twelve months, are you pretty well flat each month in terms of revenue, or does it vary based on?
It varies. If you look at January over the years, January's four thousand dollars more. Other months, it's been less.
Yeah, see, I mean, there is some- Boat registration period looks good, right? May, June?
So like February is our worst month?
February is the worst month.
And some of that is because it's three days shorter.
And boat excise tax actually goes to the harbor revenue, so it's counted differently.
Very.
I'll go buy something.
So, yeah, and I wouldn't, I mean, I-
I'm supportive of going up. I, I believe in being conservative in budgeting revenue, but we're, I don't, I don't understand why we would actually budget less than what we, what we've been taking in in recent years. So I think we're maybe too conservative, which is making the rest of the budget harder on ourselves.
Would you say eight fifty, Ken?
Eight sixty. That's my suggestion, and based on, on the various different ways to project. And the only, and keep in mind, the projection that I'm showing now is for this year, not next year. So if, I've, we've seen steady growth over the past, since, what, two thousand and?
Cars aren't getting any cheaper.
I've been tracking it for quite a while.
Yeah, I know. You can see, you can see the downturn after two thousand and eight on the sheet that Linda provided us. This one. You can see, I look at it, hers goes in the other direction, I think, yeah. We hit a bottom in, in two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven. That was the result of the two thousand and eight downturn, and ever since then, it's been up every year. So we had a time where people stopped buying cars in the, the oh eight recession, and that, that hit our excise tax for three or four years, because if, those of us who have cars, you know, the first two- the first two years are when you really get nailed on the excise tax, and then it goes down after that. So, you had a period of time there where people weren't buying new cars. And it did hit our excise tax number, and that's the, you know, the only
But we can't budget for that, right?
Well, that's the only thing. If we sat here, we saw signs, hey, people are going to stop buying cars, then we'd have to be a little more careful, I think. But certainly, the trends over the last several years are up. And I know Linda's conservative, and we have this discussion every year, but
I don't know if we ought to go up to the 860, but I'd be 850, maybe, I don't know.
I think the 860 is conservative, frankly. Since you're looking like way out, I think your number's good.
Yeah, once I wrap my head around the fact that what you were dealing with was this year's numbers, next year's numbers, you could kind of, I could come on board with that, too.
We have several committee members that spend 10 hours a day doing numbers, doing nothing but staring at potential revenue streams at their customers.
Kind of like to hear from the
860 seems pretty safe to me.
I think they're all committing to buying new cars. They'll do their part.
Holding to it.
How have car sales been doing over the last three months?
We need a portion.
We don't have to have the dealership here, we just have to have people live here who buy them.
875.
Well, anyway, we'll have to make that decision next week, or the week after, I guess. But that, like I said, I do this analysis, and you can take that and wad it up, throw it over your shoulder if you want.
We'll remember next year if it's
Yeah, you won't be here, yeah, I thought about that.
You'll be voting on this. You know, this will come up as you get into the horse trading. This is part, this number will be part of that.
So, before we get done, are we nearing the end of this?
Ask your question.
Well, no, I'm going to jump right on with, I think that there ought to be a stipend paid for the record keeper of the select board meetings and minutes. And there isn't. And we pay everybody else to do stipends for, whether it's harbor or
Isn't harbor the only one that we do?
Well, I mean, we have different people that do different stipends for their responsibilities, whether it's GA, or whether it's your EMA director, or and I say, when you look at the 800, we're paying the person for the harbor. And if you use round numbers, $25 an hour, that's 32 hours for the year. And what we have is somebody that now puts in far in excess of that, and it's not in their job description. And they're not being, I don't think, compensated for it. But that's my two cents. Is that time, Rick, to add to Mark's? Is that time that we just mentioned for this activity reflected in the overtime?
No. She's an exempt employee. But, you know, I will agree, I will agree that, you know, the workload, the workload of just that part of the job, not counting the not counting doing minutes, is, that's enough workload for what we pay. So, that piece is, there's, you know, that job is, she, you know, it's hard to have this conversation, because, you know, there's only one person in that position. But that position, I mean, you're 50-plus hours a week, probably, without a doubt. And so, and then you add on minutes on top of it. It's an extra batch of month, it's an extra batch of work.
So, I guess where I'm going with that is, if it's not in the job description, and they decide to get it done tomorrow,
Somebody else is going to have to
You're going to have to pay somebody to come in and do it.
Right, somebody else is
That's a good point, and especially, you know, Linda's not going to be in this job forever. And the next town clerk, whenever that happens, may choose not to attend evening meetings. And we would have to, the select board does need somebody to keep
And that's something, when the job descriptions are done, that that might be included in there, that that's part of their responsibility, and there is a stipend. But, you know, those things need to be doctored up and
I mean, I think the stipend idea is actually not a bad idea, because it may be that, in the future, who knows, down the road, personalities will change, and there may be somebody else in the office who would be better suited to do that.
The challenge will be, is if it's an hourly employee, you, you know, you're going to need, if it's outside of their normal 40 hours a week, you're going to have to pay them time and a half. So, when you're paying a stipend for an hourly employee, you're paying them an extra amount of money for doing the work during their normal workday. And if it's, you know, if an exempt employee is no longer doing that, then you'd have to pay him time and a half.
Or it's baked into the job position description, and the position description and the pay reflect the change.
I missed the beginning, Jeff.
Or the task is baked into the position description, and the salary is adjusted to reflect that change.
For an hourly employee?
No.
No, for the exempt employee, yeah.
The job description says that, you know, on every second Tuesday, every second Monday of the month, you come in two hours late, but stay for the
I mean, I was doing some rough numbers, and I think there's probably 60 hours a year, possibly more, where that service is used. And there, again, if you're using the same numbers, you know, that you would use for the other recording person at the harbor meeting, you're basically doubling, or near doubling, what you're paying them. I mean, I don't know what the other person's getting, an hour, but I sort of said 25 is a round number for time and a half.
The difference is, that's an, that's an hourly employee, and so, it's a time and a half.
Right, but if you figure a time and a half at 25, it's 32 hours. And, you know, so For these types of activities, if you were to do a stipend calculation or an assessment, you take base salary,
Right.
Divide by 48, calculate an hourly wage, pile it up for what the estimate is for the end of the year, and that's what the if you so chose to. That's how you do the math on that one.
Can I throw something out? So, and I'll try to make this quick. With my new job in South Thomason, I'm now tasked with taking the meeting minutes, and then typing the meeting minutes up. So, I now have this new perspective and understanding of why, when I was on the board, and I would say, oh, man, we, you know, no meeting minutes again this month, you know, can we, we'd really like them in a timely manner, we'd like them professionally done. And then I started to fully, not fully, but better understand, holy cow, it's a whole, it's a whole thing. And on top of that, when you're in a meeting, and it's pertaining to anything to do with, say, possibly, your job, you not only have to mark down what's happening, but also think in such a way that you could answer questions. So, maybe not for this budget, but I don't think that I typically never see two meetings scheduled at the same time for our town. You never really see a recreation meeting and a select board meeting happening in two separate places in the town at the same time. Meaning, maybe at some point next year, you just strike all the overtime for meeting minutes, strike all the stipends for meeting minutes. You hire one professional minute taker. That individual sits there, takes the meeting minutes. All the other town employees that are there are free to be engaged with what's happening. And then that individual can generate those minutes to the board for review quicker, not taking up, because I'm assuming you do portions of the meeting minutes during work hours, which is a portions, anyway.
You do all of it during work.
So, I mean, it's, the whole meeting minute taking is a, it's starting to gobble into to different people's times, and it just maybe at some point makes sense to look at trying to hire a full-time, you know, we're paying you 22 bucks an hour. You come to these meetings, you take the minutes, and we kind of expect them within a week.
They did that some years ago.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think
And how did it work out, and why did we shift away from it?
I think they just
Couldn't get anybody to do it.
I think they finally got done.
Yeah, she just got done with that. She retired and couldn't find anybody else to do that. Stevie?
I think, Ken, what Mark brings up is a bigger question, or a bigger, there's more to it, too, than the comp time and whatever, and Linda's job, or the town clerk's job description. Because I think every phase of that, now with this time spent on minutes. I've worked as an election clerk ever since we've lived here, except when I run for office and I can't. But I think everything has gotten so much more complex in terms of the amount of time. And there's no way, I mean, I would, I don't know that for a fact, but my suspicion is, as complicated as elections have become because of the early voting and all of that kind of thing, I don't think anybody here has a clue about the hours and the extra hours and the comp time that gets built up, not just from the, but the other people get paid. But the whole thing is, all of those things are increasing, taking away from a lot of the other things that have to be done. And I, my suspicion is, people who are exempted from overtime don't get, do never take that comp time that they've earned, at least in a lot of departments. No, what I'm saying, people that earn comp time by taking minutes for 60 hours a year, or whatever, or the extra time for elections. So, I think it's a bigger problem, and I don't, it's not for this budget committee to solve, or the select, the select board town manager thing to be looked at, I think, though, just
I don't want to belittle, you know, as a number of 1,500, or whatever it might be, but if you're considering raising your revenue 50,000, I mean, you know, it's peanuts for what you're raising it. I know we have a bigger picture and many other things to do, but I don't want to stay on this if there's no interest. Well, I think there might be a proper interest, not only for this position and activities, but any position and activity in the town is, I mean, for exempt salaried employees, it's not unreasonable to, the actual work hours are between 45 and 50 a week. When you start getting beyond that, you either got to look at a different way to do the work, or you have to, say, somebody's putting in 55 and 60 hours a week, and they need to be properly compensated for that, either through lump-sum payments, or through an adjustment to their base pay to reflect the work and the responsibilities, no matter what position it is in the town office, or any organization for that matter. So, but that's, we're bringing the concern to the town manager. This is one of the things that, you know, the town manager has to reflect this in a budget proposal, and
One thing is, you know, we've talked about, you know, I went through and I reduced every every request for salary increases back to 3%. You know, so, all of them, every single one of them got reduced back to 3%. So, there's some room here for the board to do what they, you know, whatever you think is best. And there's room there. And that's, you know, a decision you can make.
I agree with what Jeff said, and it should be in the job description, but I don't see, also, why can't you incorporate comp time to some extent? Like, if you're here until 10 o'clock tonight, and you can, you've got troops and people that can complete the work, you know, yeah, we're not going to do that. I don't see why you can't, okay, I'll be in at 10 tomorrow, because I'm over the 45 for the week.
But technically, by the Fair Labor Standards Act, an exempt employee works whatever hours. But Jeff's right. You can say, you have a number of hours that you're, this is your anticipated work hours. And then beyond that, you can have some sort of arrangement that, you know
Typically, my understanding of a salary position is that there's no set hours, there's set workload.
Right.
And whatever hours it takes to do that. So, if you're able to accomplish your workload and still come in tomorrow at 10, because you were out until 8:30 or 9:00 tonight, not 10:00 tonight, then that's fine. And typically, salaried employees are given that discretion.
But it's a technicality of, we can't, we, we don't get to call it comp time. Comp time is for hourly employees.
Just discretion with your
There's a discretionary time that
Are there currently any types of agreements with any of your salaried people to be able to leave early, or if they work late or weekends, or
There's no written agreement.
That was what I said, is there any agreement, written or verbal?
Typically, when people come in and say, you know, if it's an employee that's been working a lot during the week and says, I'm going to take the afternoon off. I mean, I, there are some employees that will say, and they'll come in with a vacation slip for a half a day, and I'll say to them, you know, you've worked hard enough. You know, you don't take, I'm not signing this slip. I'm not charging you with your vacation time for a half a day's work.
So, people do it now, though?
Yeah, right.
So, that can be done.
Oh, it can, and it does happen.
You may not call it comp time,
Right.
but it's comp time. And if you have someone, this week is a classic example, where you have multiple direct reports that are putting in eight-plus hours in the evening, that's a, hey, why don't you take Friday off conversation? But that's something the town manager needs to manage to on that, that's your role.
And I do that. And there is times when people will submit a leave slip, and I'll say, I'm not putting it on a leave slip, you just take the time off.
The whole town, the minute-taking issue has been a little bit blurry over the years. The state makes distinctions between advisory committees and quasi-judicial committees, who needs to have minutes, who doesn't need to have minutes. And, you know, I think this discussion should be at a higher level and really look at how our town does accomplish minutes and get them done. In the past, I've sort of advocated for the various advisory committees to get their minutes to the select board in a timely fashion that might take away some of the time we need to put in as liaison people. So, it could definitely be improved, but it would be sort of a real project to undertake. And that may be something the new town manager would be interested in pursuing.
I'd say, I agree, and I'd say, in addition to that, I think it wouldn't be a bad idea to take some time, put together a policy with regard to overtime for hourly wage earners and comp time or not. Language aside, the handling of extra hours for salaried employees. But I think we keep, these things keep coming up in a budget committee conversation, but these are not budget committee conversations, these are policy decisions. And then the budget can reflect the policy.
And that was my point earlier, this is a town manager function. This is leadership, this is managing employees and time off, and that type of thing. The one, you've got to have two different policies, as you know, because you have hourly employees, and you have exempt and non-exempt. But in the rest of the world, non-municipal areas, when somebody's put in 40 hours in three days, you know, take Friday off.
Right.
Mr. Chairman,
Yep.
this is also an opportunity to remember this conversation. Should, you know, in terms of institutional knowledge, there has been in the past efforts to have, to look around at the other communities around and to see how our employees are paid versus other employees. But what always falls short on those efforts is the exact understanding, the intimate understanding of what the town clerk and, you know, Owl's Head does versus the town clerk, and Ken versus our town clerk, et cetera. So, I think one of the things, and it goes back to Jeff's comment about base salary, is that if and when the next salary compensation committee is enacted, I would urge them to do a very, very deep dive, because there are many differences that the title, that belie just the simple title. So, I think that's important for us to understand. And then it becomes, again, a conversation with the select board and the budget committee, with how come this person's paying so much? It's defensible, because when we called around and when we did that survey, we did it accurately. And our people are doing it a ton. We have terrific employees that work very hard. But we have to acknowledge, we have to somehow do better at understanding what it is they do come time to, should we do a survey, salary survey again.
And I'll say, so Linda doesn't have to, we have a hospital, and now the Sussman House, that makes that job very different than other surrounding communities and their town clerk.
And also
Previously, it was just the hospital, but now with the Sussman House, that's starting to add an additional
But I also wanted to add to that, we also have the lovely Sammaset timesheets,
Right.
which no other town has. Well, maybe they do have hotels, but, I mean, that in itself, just in the years I've been here, the amount, what that adds to that town clerk job is ridiculous.
I think this brings us back to the original premise of this whole thing, which was, Rick, yank the budget back to LD1. And our job is to see where stuff should go back in, where it should come out, and decide where we want to land.
And I just want to say one thing, that I agree with the comments that were made about the stipend for the town clerk position. about the stipend for the town clerk position, et cetera, because I think that, I think that the amount of time that's put in, just in our meetings alone, is a tremendous amount. I don't agree with the idea that we hire somebody to take meeting minutes. I come from the private industry, where I was the general counsel for a trade association, and I had staff, and staff always went to every committee meeting, and staff always took the minutes for that particular committee. And that's the way it works in the industry, not just the trade association that I worked for, but every organization I've ever been involved in. It doesn't mean, I'm not talking about you with a town manager situation, I mean, I can't imagine the idea of a town manager sitting here and engaging in this kind of, you know, conversation. But at a harbor committee meeting, yes, I think that the, I personally believe that the staff person who is assigned to the harbor committee, not a recording secretary, ought to be the one who's taking the minutes and submitting those minutes. And that should be done by a staff person for every committee. And I've said that before, and I just wanted to reiterate that again. I don't think that we should be going out and hiring somebody to, to do that.
There really isn't enough to, either way, there's not enough of that to hire a full-time person. You'd, you'd be accepting a huge financial burden for not that, there's not that many boards and committees that have minutes like that.
And it's really not that tough, and I, just like I have worked with you guys with the staff on, you know, a number of things, I'd be happy to work, to come up with a template kind of thing, to make it easy for staff to take minutes. So, you know, those are the kinds of things we can do.
Yeah, not all committees have staff members that attend their meetings, but the ones who do.
But I'm, but what I'm suggesting is, perhaps they should.
And some of the smaller ones, their secretary will take, and that's a, that's a committee member position, but yeah, it's very select committees to where that's, that kind of makes sense.
We actually do have a form that's suggested by the state for advisory committees, and we sort of tried to roll it out, didn't get with a lot of success, because chair, committee chairman, you know, weren't really enthusiastic about it, but it was pretty simple, you know, just the date, who was there, what was discussed, and what actions were recommended.
Well, it's difficult, because when you have some, you have some committees, you're, you're dealing with volunteers, you're right, but you have some committees that function extremely well, and if you throw a monkey wrench into that and tell them you got to do this, then, then perhaps they don't function as well. But, you know, I think it's something worth study, for sure. Any further questions on the town clerk budget? Helen?
Line 5405, computer office supplies, according to the explanation, the department head says we're already spent two-thirds of the budget in money, and they need a new file cabinet, and it's like a $600 difference, I mean, is that really something?
They, they have a file cab.
Oh, you did get a file cabinet?
There, there is a file cabinet, it's, it's to replace a file cabinet.
Right, okay. Some of our file cabinets, the ones.
It would be nice.
The ones that we had that were surplus and were spray painted to match the building when we moved in there 20-something years ago.
Is it easy to open and close them and everything, or are they getting?
They're, they're fine.
They're fine, okay.
But it's, you know, we've been working over time, so that they all, that they're all, they all match, and they, there's, I mean, the office is starting to look good, it's starting to look good, but this is one more of the step of getting another file cabinet that matches all the other ones.
Get rid of the old ones.
And get rid of the old ones.
So if we horse trade, we say 875 for excise tax, you get a.
There you go. Keep those numbers coming.
I mean, I'm good with that.
Is there another department that can use the old one if we get you a new one?
Usually the police department.
Yeah, right.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, because that's what everybody sees when they come into the building.
Yeah.
Is the, the place that they see mostly is Linda's office.
So you're suggesting the people who come into the police department, they don't care what they say?
Oh, they can't go in there.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, restricted.
Okay, anything else on the town clerk's budget?
Just remind me, the, all the stuff in the safe is in the building budget, not in your budget, fire suppression stuff that we've talked about for years.
It's in the capital improvement plan.
Capital improvement, okay, cool.
Somewhere.
Okay, then we'll pop back up to the top, and planning and community development, which will be page 112. Thank you, Linda.
This one is a decrease of about $12,000 in this budget, because we have a contract with MaKed, that's, we, is this the second year, or?
This will be the second year.
Beginning of the second year. With, when we went to, with MaKed, of that contract, and we also have a $9,000 increase in revenue, so it brings the decrease in this budget down to about $22,000. Initially, I was a little, you know, I thought it was okay idea to go with the contracted service with MaKed, but it's actually working out very, very well. I, I think we're getting excellent service from MaKed. He's, he's supposed, technically, he's supposed to be in the office, I believe it's Wednesdays is his day that he's supposed to be here, but he's here probably three days of the week, you know, but we tell people if, his scheduled day is Wednesday, and, but he, when he's got work, he comes here and he works, and frankly, we're getting, we're getting really good service, and I, I haven't seen a decline in service, actually, I've seen an uptick in that's, that service in that department, and also, we, Megan and I talked about the revenue projections today, and typically, normally, we would be a little skeptical about this revenue projection, but given the way that office is running now, we're more confident with this revenue projections.
Where, and there again, I probably overlooked it, but where, where is, I mean, of the pot of money that we're paying that person out of, at the halfway point, what have we expended?
Twenty-six thousand, nine thirty-five.
It's in line, 360.
Thirty, okay, sorry. So we're, we're 9,000 under the halfway point.
But when we did the 1819 budget, we didn't have a contract price, so we were using estimates when we developed the budget, and the contract price actually came in under what we budgeted.
I was going to say, didn't we, as a board, authorize 70,000 for that position, or that?
Well, it's 85 in the last year's budget, we must have authorized that. We weren't sure what it would be at that point.
Well, this, this, sorry, this includes money for MaKed, and then it also included the money for midcoast regional planning.
Which doesn't exist anymore.
Right, so they were supposed to do some work for us.
Because I think the overall position before, with all the benefits and the stipends, is it was 99, and I think we rolled it back and saved 29 by putting 70.
Yeah, that sounds right.
If I remember correctly.
Yeah, and I think, you're probably right, because Megan said there was another contract in there, it wasn't just the MaKed contract, the 85,000. The budget for last year, the 3060 for the 1819 budget of 85,000 included more than just the MaKed number, because of midcoast regional planning.
So we're still, we're about 8,000 under what we.
And we, we should also keep in mind, is, he's not billing, MaKed is not billing us extra for the work that he's doing on the comprehensive plan. So we, we had been planning on, you know, contracting with someone to do that work, now it falls right in under the MaKed contract that we have now with Bill doing it.
I've had a great opportunity to talk to Bill while I've been doing warrants out back, and he's doing a phenomenal job of, of finding and doing and, and being, so we're getting our money's worth.
Yeah, he's active, he's dragging, I mean, we, we dragged in a, a few more grants.
Well, the northern border grant was, that was one we weren't supposed to get, we got it.
Right, but he's also, he's also applied for a lot of grants, he's been really out aggressively applying for grants, you know, I, I don't, you don't hand him a grant and it disappears, it's all of a sudden, he's, you hand him a grant application and he's handing it back to you like two weeks later, can you sign here?
Owen, you had a question?
Yeah, and it's, it's a somewhat budget-related question, but, so Rick, you're likely not going to be here at the next budget.
No, I will not.
So the question is, for the folks that will be around for a while, I just, under what scenario with economic development can we expect to be looking back for a full-time planning and community development director? Have you all had any discussions of that? So, so fast forward two years from now, and Jeff's still here, and Jared's still here, and someone, the new minute manager says, hey, I'm thinking about this new position, what does the economy in town look like to where we go? Yeah, that's a great idea, we want him back.
Yeah, a lot will depend on the, the next, the next manager you hire, and then I, I believe, you know, Bill, Bill has, he's similar age to me, you know, so he's got, he's, not next year, but possibly the year after, he'll be retiring at some point, and I think you've got a couple of years, but then, at that point, you'll want, you'll want to reevaluate it and say, see if it's still working, see if the person that replaces him has the same abilities and will serve the town well. I mean, I, I'm not nervous about it, I was a little nervous about it when we did it last year, not overly concerned, but a little bit, and, but I'm totally comfortable with it, and I don't see it changing for a couple of years.
And so, for folks, regionally, we were the smallest town that had a full-time planning and community development person.
Right.
Because of just, it was working out okay, that individual moved on, and we replaced it with this construct that you're seeing now, with the kind of understanding that if something happened locally, all of a sudden, we're getting a lot more development, we're seeing a lot more activity, then they would have a discussion about bringing back a full-time person.
I mean, if we go back to, and Tom probably remembers, if you go back to the time when you had, you know, a handful of subdivisions every year, then we would be talking about that.
Extra planning work meetings every month, and no-go hearings, and.
You know, if you, if you end, if we end up with the, the name of the potential development down off of, behind.
The, the one Oakland Park area?
Yeah, Oakland Park.
Yeah.
That's a couple of years off in development, I think, but if you had that and another develop, big development happening at the same time, it may be too much for the planner to keep up with on a part-time basis.
And I have a question on the revenues. We have the, the hotel potentially coming in, was that factored into the revenues, or is that?
Scott and Bill did the projections for the revenues. So they based it on what they've done so far this year and projected out what they knew was coming up.
Okay, so I just wonder, because the hotel will be a fairly significant fee, that would be, I'd, I'd be interested to hear if they included that in their projections or not, and.
I think they did. I mean, you're looking at a fairly significant increase, so.
Right, right. So that was my question there.
I mean, they've done the, the, the geotech work is, was done a couple of weeks ago, so they started the geotech stuff, but I, I'm, you know, the developer's out of the country.
Right.
You know, he's in Hawaii now.
Another question on revenues, on R 0208, the wastewater reimbursement, why is that down so much? Because it seems like.
Because we used to reimburse for the code enforcement officer and the planner, and now it's just the code enforcement officer.
Even though the planner is, I mean, the planning contract is doing a lot of wastewater work?
I mean, it's something that you can look at.
Yeah, because I, it seems to me, I mean, we got this big sewer development coming up, and he's spending a lot of his time on that.
He's spent a lot of time on that.
So I would think that that would be something that we should be able to recover from wastewater.
That, that would, that could bump it up a little bit. Good catch, Ken.
Anybody?
I had a question. I've got a question. Line 5425 on the postage, why aren't the planning board members simply coming in and picking up their packets like the select board does when they have meetings? Why are we mailing them to them?
I don't know that we do, is that what it says?
That's what it says.
Talking to Hannah, apparently, they aren't coming in and picking them up, so they're not prepared for their planning board meetings.
And Rick's not driving around, dropping them off?
Police could do, police department could do that.
We have to get him a new, all of them.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a minor amount, but good heavens, guys, go pick it up yourself.
Are we ahead of schedule?
Pardon me?
Are we ahead of schedule?
And that's on the, that's, are you saying that that's 5425?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That number does seem a little high, especially where, I don't know where we are now, and the, but the year-to-date was only $34, and maybe we spent a little more over the last couple of months, I don't know, but.
I mean, a lot. If you.
Being anal like that, when I was looking at all of those ones, like the postage, just some that hadn't even been used in the first six months, and going, they must have mailed something, but it's not big enough to even.
Sometimes it probably falls out of another department or something.
Well, I was, I was surprised that they delivered the books to us this year, we've always gone in and gotten them.
We delivered them last year, too, because somebody requested that we did.
Oh, okay. Totally off the subject on that, then, when you go and make your changes, you print the whole thing again, which is a hideously expensive thing, why not just print the pages that have the changes?
Because it's too hard to just pick out the pages that have changes.
And the time.
Right, it wouldn't be time.
Or we could hand them to you and say, you could go through.
I'd go through and pick them out anyway.
You could do the hand collection, right?
I mean, that's a, that's a good point, actually, because for me, I've, I've got this book, and I made all kinds of notes in it, quite honestly, I don't look at the second printed one.
No.
I'd be happy to have the second one in electronic form, I don't know how other people feel about that.
And I've offered that up, but nobody's elected to.
Yeah, but I mean, to reprint the glossary and the, and the front stuff is ridiculous.
Yeah, I agree with that, and I, I would take it in electronic form.
I mean, because we're going to have.
I'm going to keep this, like, again.
I'm going to keep this one in up, as we go through it, I'm marking this up.
Yeah.
And then final will be the final.
Yeah. Do you want an electronic?
I would, I'm happy with an electronic one, and I think, you know, you may want to have one or two printed ones for town meetings, so that, you know, at the, at the front, on the stage of town meeting, people can look through and make sure they have a proper print one to reference, but I don't think everybody, I mean, I guess any, any budget committee member or any select board member who wants a reprinted copy can have one, but.
If it's electronic, would you click?
I think we could save.
Let's do it not automatically, but do it by request.
Yeah. Because it's. I think, I think, yeah, last year, you said, if you don't need one, then tell me. I think you should do it the other way around. If you want a new printed copy, then let me know, and I'll print one for you, but otherwise, here's the electronic.
What I'll do, it's too large of a document to email, so I'll let you all know when it's posted on the website. I'm getting there. I'll let everybody know when it's posted to the website, and you can download it from the website.
Okay, that works. He could do it quietly, so nobody sees you. And then we'll all print it, and then my partner will take it off the printer and I'll print it again. Okay, does anybody have any further questions? I think we're.
Well, I have a question, but I have a point. You had asked us to put off on the reviews, the reserve funds and the amounts that have been deleted, so a lot of us didn't say anything early on about things that we wanted to put back in.
Okay.
And, well, we've got this list now, why don't we go through some of these that were early in the game, where we didn't voice our opinions?
We could do that.
Do you want me to explain what these are?
Can we take a five-minute break first, though?
Um, I, we can go, you want to run through it, Megan? Actually, that's, why don't we have Megan, Megan gave us a lot of material tonight, why don't we just have her go through that material and, and let us know what it is, and then if we want to talk about the reserve funds now, we certainly, we have time, so, it'd be nice to get it a little early, but we're in good shape, so.
So hopefully, this packet includes everything that the board and the budget committee were looking for in terms of condensing, some of the things you wanted to pay closer attention to. So the first one is the reserve accounts, I put what budget they were in, the reserve name, what was requested by the department head, and the changes Rick made to it, and then what the differences are for those. The next one is the cuts made specifically to meet LD1, so that's any of the boxes that show up in red throughout the budget, same thing.
And that includes the, the reserves on this list, too?
Yes, they are.
Well, we got to find everything.
So it's a staple document, that's, on the top, it says cuts to meet LD1.
Okay.
And then the next one is the capital projects left in the budget, which hopefully, hopefully addresses a yurt.
It does, it does. My only adder here would be, these show the actual cost of the projects, but some of this, for example, the intersection and library work had some offsets.
Yeah.
Okay, but so, it would be, if that's the only one, we'll just take notes on this, you don't have to redo it, but if, if that's the only one that has any offsets to it.
That is the only one that has any offsets.
So the net on that was 220, correct?
Right.
So that brings the bottom line down. So that brings the bottom line down.
All right, so we just did advanced math over here and calculated that $313,347 of capex is left back, is left in this budget as presented.
The next thing is the alarm system upgrades. The only one that was contingent on doing another one was the West Rockport. We have to do the Opera House prior to doing the upgrades at West Rockport because part of the equipment that's still good here is gonna be moved over there to save money. Another thing, the wrong quote was used for the public works. So for the fire alarm, pole stations and alarms which are corroded, it's $3,400. So I put those amounts in there.
Which one?
So where, I've lost there. Where's that one?
It's down in the notes on the bottom.
On public works.
I didn't put it up at the top because it wasn't requested by the department head and the town manager didn't change it. So take note of that.
So that's, technically, that should go into that line, the blank line?
It should. That's why I put this quote was missed, and then I put the information at the bottom.
Megan, I had a question there, which came up at the library board meeting this morning, too. With the new library, will that be, is the expense of that, will the alarm system that goes in there and the security system and things, will that be totally separate from all the other town things? Are all these separate, each alarm system, and so that's already paid for and should be an upgrade if it's in the building?
I've been told that it's included in the cost of the construction of the library.
It's in, it's in the construction budget, yeah.
Monitoring.
The monitoring after the fact will be different. That'll be one of the things that then we'll have to figure out in the first...
But they have a pretty set rate, so I don't think, because they already have the monitoring where they are now, so I don't think we'll see changes there.
So with that, 3411 piled back in there, again, we did advanced math, came out with $56,386 under the amount requested by department head. With the 3411 added back in.
The next one is possible changes to revenue, which I included Ken's thing with. These are some of the things that we had, or you guys had discussed throughout. So it includes the $5,000 for the intern, the additional $50,000 for excise tax, the change in the winter boat storage, the launching haulers, marine park rental fees. Those are increases that I put my opinion on. I think both of those could be increased. The, and then the fees for midco solid waste, and then potential additional funding from the cemetery fund. I'm just waiting on a response, on an email. The next one is the possible places to make changes, which includes the staffing wages that were to be moved from the town office building to the finance department, as well as the fees that Jeff alluded to for the live streaming service here. There's a couple more from tonight that we could add to that, but it's really not gonna significantly change this year.
I mean, you're just moving buckets around there.
Pretty much.
Oh, yeah, your net change is 350 bucks. That's just the increase in the, the live stream.
The next one is the UFB analysis. And this will really be for the select board when they go through and decide what they wanna use from the unassigned fund balance. The first part is the proposed net budget. I used Rick's budget number, so we can adjust this as the select board develops their budget, which will then filter down through the number of days expenses. Currently, we are at about 60 days' worth of our expenses. Rick and I are making the recommendation of $150,000 from the unassigned fund balance, which would put us to about 55 days' worth of expenses. So we can update this as you're developing your budget.
And behind that is the cash flow analysis stuff.
Which you can, if you go to the last page of the cash flow, these are the projections for the year, which so far have been fairly close in terms of actuals. But you can see where our, our cash crunch months are, which is August, February, March, and sometimes June. And what I did, the parameters for highlighting them is when we have to issue another school payment prior to receiving taxes. Because right now, our taxes are estimated based on historical percentages, and somebody might decide not to pay their $25,000 tax bill in January, but instead decide to pay it in February, which could cause us some problems.
We had a number of wages that were above 3%, and there are gonna be some corrections made, so in, I think...
We talked about that yesterday, and, and we said that what, how that happened was that they did some, when they did the 3% calculation and then, and then the rounding.
But I think that there were still some that, I think that there still were, weren't there still some that were not rounding errors, that they, they still slipped through with some increases? I'm just, okay.
Cleaning service, I think, was the only...
And is that captured in here, then?
I did not, but I...
And what we said is when we entered the increases in the payroll system, the 3.000...
No. So that gives us a little slush on the budget.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
I have two slightly procedural-type questions. One, the wastewater budget that falls within the purview of the wastewater commissioners and not within the purview of the budget committee, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. And two, I asked this question, I think, like, the first night about a recommendation from the budget committee on the UFB and whether that's also falling in our purview. You kinda said that we had flexibility to, if we wanted to or not, but understanding the UFB, the drawdown, not rocket science for sure, but definitely something to wanna sit and be thoughtful about. And so if we're gonna be providing a recommendation on drawing down the UFB, I'd just like to know so I can wrap my head around that.
Well, I mean, basically, the, the strict procedure is gonna be that the select board will get together in early March, whatever the date is, the March 3rd, March 4th, whatever it is. And we'll go through and do our horse trading, and we'll come up with a proposed budget, which will include a number from the UFB. And then we will send that to the budget committee, and the budget committee can make whatever comments they like on it. Technically, by charter or whatever, all that has to happen at that point is, okay, the select board presents the budget to the budget committee, the select board votes their recommendations on each warrant article, the budget committee votes theirs, and then we go to town meeting. But in all the time I've been on the board, the budget committee has always sent a message back to the select board saying, you know, we'd like your budget except for line, whatever it is, and line, we'd like to increase this or decrease that or whatever. And usually, it's, in my time on the board, it's been no more than a half a dozen items that the budget committee comes back to the select board and says, we'd like to make this adjustment, or we'd like to make this adjustment. And I think, from my time on the board, almost all the time, the select board has taken those adjustments and included them in the budget. And then, once we do that final step, then it goes back to the budget committee again for your warrant article recommendations.
Thank you.
Yeah, in my mind, it, we have to go to the voters in June and ask the voters to agree on a budget. And if we, if the two groups can't get to a place of common ground, you know, it typically, there often is like one item where there might be a little bit of rub on.
Survivor.
Yeah, there might be a one item that there's a little bit of a discrepancy on. But the goal is to, to go to the voters with, you know, that you, that you've kinda come to a compromise, you know, and typically, in Rockport, it hasn't been like, you know, a big struggle. And other towns I've worked in, it's, it's a struggle to get that compromise. It's almost like in Washington. But, you know, here, it's not that, that way typically. But, you know, if you're asking the voters to vote on something, if, if you can't agree, how do you, how do we expect the voters to come?
I mean, technically speaking, all that's required by charter is that the select board gives the budget committee a budget, and the budget committee makes a recommendation on it. Ever since I've been on the board, it's been a much more collaborative process like we've had this year, and I think it works for the most part. I think we get a lot of good ideas, speaking for myself, I, as a board member, have always gotten a lot of good ideas from the budget committee. And it's another, it's a sounding board for us, yeah.
Do the voters see selectmen recommend 4-1?
Yeah.
Or if it's a divided vote, and then the budget committee...
Yeah, they see every, vote on every warrant article.
So it's being on a given account.
The select board makes a recommendation on every warrant article. The budget committee only makes recommendation on warrant articles that have money in them.
Okay, but it's, it's a budget committee recommends...
They will say, select board recommends three to two, or five to zero, or whatever it is, and budget committee recommends, you know, seven to zero, or six to one, or whatever it might be, so...
And then the other thing that will occasionally happen at town meeting is that somebody from the audience will say, I see that the budget committee voted X to X on this. Could, could the chair of the budget committee please give us a flavor of that conversation?
And there was, I think it was the last year or the year before, there was an issue that the budget committee voted unanimously against, and the select board voted unanimously in favor, and the warrant article failed.
Was that making the hot dogs over...
I, we, yeah.
If I could. So I'm looking at capital projects improvement work overall, and I'm looking at the two pages, capital projects left in the budget, cuts to meet LD1, those two pages. Let me make sure I'm thinking about this one. Essentially, we have identified a total of 1.225 million in activity. The town manager pulled out 780,000 of that, hit the LD1, leaving us with 463,000 or so left for improvement work. Just trying to get the total magnitude of...
And don't forget the 150 offset.
Right.
Minus the, yeah, all right.
Yeah, yeah.
So really, the, I mean, what you left in was the 313.
Helen had asked if we could go through the reserve accounts and sort of make some...
Well, I've got a quick suggestion that might get us a little bit, one question first, and that is the alarm system upgrades. I think we've heard over the discussions the various nights that everybody is in favor of putting these back in to some extent, that these are safety issues for our employees and our town and our buildings. And I'm wondering if we could simply discuss the, the page with all the alarm system upgrades on it, which comes to $56,386 over several departments.
I'm open to that discussion. I guess my, is this, my question to the manager, I guess, is this an all or nothing item here?
No, it's not an all or nothing thing. And there's a, there's a variety of differences here. I mean, the alarm system in the town office building is working. It's not malfunctioning. It's just, it's out, out of date, but it's, it, it works, and it, it's a functioning alarm system. The alarm system in the, we do not have a fire alarm system in the, in the harbor building. There's no, so if there's a fire down there, nobody gets notified of that. And if it happened tonight, we wouldn't get notified until somebody saw, saw flames or smoke down there. So there's no, so that one's a definite priority. That, that one, we should be doing that down there. The next one is the...
And you included that in the budget. You didn't cut that.
Yes, right.
Okay.
Sorry, I, I wanna ask you something on that. That's unpopular, I'm sure. And, and don't, don't, I don't mean to sound crass when I, when I ask this, but, so when you're talking about the harbor building, for example, I assume that, and Megan's gonna confirm this for me, that we have replacement insurance on it. There aren't any, I mean, if something were to happen to it on off-hours, there aren't people sleeping in there. There are people, you're not talking about injury or loss of life.
Right.
You do have replacement insurance on it. I mean, really, seriously, I, I understand.
You do.
But, 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 you know, when we're talking about safety, I just don't want to ignore the fact that we've got replacement insurance. We pay a premium for it. If we had like some ear repla, this building is different. This building has historical value in and of itself to this town. That, you know, nobody wants to replace the harbor building, but, you know, when we're making these difficult decisions...
That building is replaceable.
Right.
Well, the flip side of it, though, is that what happens to your insurance rates in subsequent years? And also, if it happens at the wrong time of the year, what happens to the revenue stream in the harbor? I mean, if we have, if we have a fire in the harbor in the middle of the busy season or whatever, chances are, you'd have to restrict access to it for some period of time, both from land and from water.
All fair considerations.
Yeah, so that's, I understand what you're saying, but I'm, I'm just playing...
Another fair consideration is, is anything that just puts first responders in jeopardy. You know, so again, that's part of the...
If we go to the, this building here, you know, this building is a wood, wooden structure that we have, you know, the alarm system works, but we get a lot of calls. And we had, we had one recently where the alarm system isn't working right. It means somebody has to come down and check it. And so there's the, there's a lot of false alarm things going on. And so when you have a lot of false alarms things going on, there's a tendency to say, oh, it's probably another false alarm. So this, this building is another one that I think is raised to a level, a higher level of priority because it is irreplaceable. And if it went, it will go, I mean, it's all sprinkled, but if it went, it would go fairly quickly.
We, we propose, I don't mean to make this up. We have a $25,000 proposal for an alarm system in this building. We currently have an alarm system. There's a middle ground where you could get 90% of additional protection or redundant protection for only 10% of that value. I mean, you could, you could put in a temporary or much lower, high-techy alarm system to just to fire alone.
Really? That, that's, that's something new to me, and I'm aware of it.
Totally. High-techy and monitor it from, you know, your phone.
Your phone.
Jason could monitor it from his phone. I mean, there's lots of, there's lots of high-tech things that are not anywhere near this kind of commercial cost.
This is commercial, hardwired.
Exactly, yes. This is the same security company that provides security to all of our buildings.
And of course, we've got one gig coming into this building, so it's not like we don't have the, you know...
I was saying that there are, there are options where you could get 90% of the benefit for 10% of the cost.
Plus, you, you, I mean, the system does work here.
Right.
It's redundant, it's a redundant system. That's interesting. I, I was unaware of that.
What's the comment? Could be reduced to 25,000. What does that...
Because we, we, we stuck a number in here because we did not have anything, so we just took a wild swag guess.
It wasn't, they provided us. It wasn't like we just pulled a number out of the sky. They provided us...
Budgetary estimate.
But then when they came in with an actual quote, it was 25,000.
Okay, so the 25,000 is probably a more realistic number than the 35,000.
That's an actual quote.
So is that, is that full security with, like, motion sensors and door alarms and window alarms and...
Uh, it would be, so it's two pieces. For the actual alarm system, it's only 1,200 bucks. So for them to install it, wire up the windows and the doors, I don't know if so it's necessarily like a motion thing, but if an exterior wall was breached, then it would go off. The biggest part of it is the fire alarm system, which is $18,400.
That's an elaborate system of detection monitors.
No, that, well, I mean, there's a lot of numbers and stuff here on this quote, but from what I can tell, it's not...
Yeah, the problem is, you gotta have sensors up in the attic and stuff like that for this building, I guess.
I mean, to do it right, but if there are immediate concerns that our current system is...
Yeah, no, it's, it's, it's not, it is functional, and it's just, we're getting false alarms, and it's old technology.
Right.
And so there's a drive to get the old technology taken out and bargained. And the other thing is, I mean, I don't know, what, what do we have for technology in this building now? You know, how much do we have invested in technology in here?
Not enough, no. Sitting right there, replacement, 26,000.
Yeah.
Can we not regularly schedule that stuff on our insurance?
I could, I don't, I have no idea.
Megan, if we don't, we should be looking at that.
My guess is there's probably a limit on that.
But we, but we don't have a, we don't have a security system in this building. It's one of the few, you know, you know, we don't have any kind of, you know, you lock the building and the, the alarm is set. There's no, there's none of that in this building.
So when they did the inspection for this building, their points of concern were the entry pole station failed the test, took several attempts to activate the alarm system. So when they actually went to the box, pulled it, it didn't activate the system. The basement exit pole station failed the test. There was no smoke at the fire alarm panel. I don't really know what that means. One attic heat detector didn't work. All building heat detectors are from four, 20 to 40 years old. No exit pole at the box office or balcony, nor seats. Meeting room horn light failed test. No restroom strobe, so that means if the power goes off, there's no lights for people to see to get out. Building's AV is not up to standard. I don't know what that is.
The strobes are to notify people with...
People that, right.
Here.
Yeah. Well, I think the bathroom is for lighting.
I hope too.
And then three, three dock detectors failed, and the HVA system shut down function.
We spent 25,000 right there.
Yeah.
Well, the thing is, we're talking about replacement value of the building, but there are times when this building has an awful lot of people in, and it might be nice to have a really good...
Right, right.
So I mean, in my mind, this, this is, this, this building is a higher, is a higher priority because it, it is so, it is so susceptible, and it's a wood structure. There's a lot of people in here a lot of the time.
But what I heard was the real number is 25, not 35.
The real number is 25,000.
Then why don't we put that back in?
And I think that, you know, the public safety building, we have to think about too, because we've got a couple million dollars' worth of fire apparatus in there. And, you know, were we to lose that, I mean, yeah, you've got replacements value insurance, but when are you going to get it? You know, you're not going to get a truck the next, not going to go down to Walmart and buy it.
Exactly. You have to do that analysis on every one of those.
And the other part is, you know, these are the types of things you'd like to throw in a bond if you could expect the life expectancy of this technology to be longer than...
Five years.
Yeah. Problem is, when you look at this stuff, you depreciate it, and you look at the average life expectancy of this.
Yeah, and it's, I think, I think we need to think about this stuff carefully in our horse trading.
But on the public safety building, we, I thought they did have an alarm system. They don't have an alarm system?
Yeah, I don't, I believe they have an alarm system, but I think it's a similar thing. It needs to be updated.
I have a, I have a question for those folks who have researched. I know that we are loyal to one particular company, and that probably locks us into a particular A way of thinking and B set of physical gear that wants to complement each other. But is it, given this snapshot in time, is it worth your effort to look at other providers that may, you know, come closer to what Jeff was saying, 90% with 10% of the cost, and move the, move the ship in a different direction from a safety perspective? I don't know the answer to that, but I'm just wondering.
I don't know the answer to it either. We, you know, CCO Security has been providing our security. If, you know, changing, you could, you know...
We put $50,000 in the budget, then I think that's an RFP.
Yeah.
You know, you put it out there and say, you would have to by your own control.
I was going to say, don't you have to, you have to anyway?
How long would it take to get that, though? To put out a request for an alarm?
Three months plus three.
Yeah, I mean, but you're just putting in the budget. The budget's not going to be available until July 1.
Well, if it's in the budget, you could put out the RFP, and then you say, pending contingent on funding.
Right.
Yeah.
So you'd be ready to go at the first of the year, or, well, first of July.
Ken, would there be any grant possibilities for a bundle, for the whole bundle?
There are some generous people in town, and there are some who may think about that kind of thing. So the answer is, yeah, I don't, I don't know where they are. And I mean, Jason is pretty good at smoking out grant opportunities.
Smoking out is probably not the right word.
Or lighting a fire under the...
This is going downhill fast.
We can burn that number down quick.
So the answer is, there probably are. But I think, we couldn't count on that for a budget number. We'd have to put the number in the budget, and then if we get a grant, then we're so much good if the money goes back on the UFP.
Yeah. Well, what are the other, so, am I hearing that everybody is, thinks that the 25,000 should go back in for the Opera House?
Well, I think we're thinking it's a high priority.
Yeah, but we're not making decisions tonight. I mean, it has to do with a lot of other things, like roads.
I mean, Rick told us the town office building was not a high priority. He told us the harbor building is a high priority, at least in terms of the fact that it has no alarm system. As Deborah said, it is a replaceable building, but...
But, you know, if you are going to go and, and if we are going to look in that bigger picture of doing them all, then it, it would make sense to do them all.
Yeah.
Make it a better price.
To throw them in and do them all. If we're going to pick, if we're going to pick and choose, you know, we can...
Well, the only other thing, question I had is back on the town office building, the fire alarm. For the longest time, we talked about the vault, and I don't recall what has happened with the vault and the talent.
That's still in the capital improvement.
It's still in the capital improvement things, okay.
Fire suppression in there, which is very expensive.
Okay.
It's special fire suppression.
Yes.
Two vital documents, water.
Okay, that was a good discussion, I think. Do we want to go through the reserve funds and make some comments on those? Reserve accounts. The first one is the accrued benefits reserve. We really have to fund that, and the town manager did not pull that out. Unless anybody has any.
I've misplaced some stuff. I've got to find it.
The accrued benefits reserve, you can't mess with that, and Rick left that in. Building Improvement Reserve for 10,000, and I'd have to go back and remember what...
What's in there now?
Well, let's go back to the book here.
No, those are in the front of the page.
Page 62 or something.
Sixty-something.
Sixty and 61.
15,142.
What page are those on?
Start on page 60.
Sixty.
There's 15,000, and there was, there was, well, there's 5,000 right now. It'll be 15,000 at the end of the fiscal year with a $10,000 deposit this year. I don't recall if we, if there was a plan for that, or...
I was going to say...
No, there's work that has to be done out back, walls and stuff like that. And then, we're having a lot of problems with the air conditioning system. The building is 20 years old, so that money was starting to be put in there for that.
But there was no...
There's no dire...
Critical item, yeah, no dire need, okay. That's, that's, the computer reserve is, that's, that's the plan that was come up with a couple of years ago, or just make, you know, every year we make a certain deposit, and we have a schedule of purchases that we're making and keeping our computers up to date, and that was left in.
Can I, just a quick comment. Sorry, it took me a minute to find it. I didn't want to be in favor of the Building Improvements Reserve reduction. However, looking at the municipal buildings, building repairs and maintenance line, it was doubled from last year. So even though we wouldn't put something, if we chose not to, put something in the reserve account, there's still 6,500 available for that building during that time. Just as a, just as a kind of...
On top of the reserve.
Uh, page 132. Yeah, so just trying to give a frame of reference. If we chose not to, there is still a relatively healthy amount of building stuff.
In the grand scheme of things, that one may be whatever. Computer reserve, the solar power reserve, that's, that's the schedule to pay for the panels when they come due, and what is it now? Eight years from now, or?
No, no.
Five years.
Five years. Have they been up there that long?
What was it? It was seven years.
Seven years.
Seven years, okay, yep. So there's a set buyout price of those panels. We put in the same one every year, so that at the end of the seven years, we have to buy, and we have the money.
Mr. Chair, are you looking for any reaction, or are you just going over?
Yeah, absolutely.
So going back just up one line, computer reserve, computers are tools for everybody in the, in the office, and, and that was a well-thought-out plan. I would, I would urge both bodies to consider putting that back in because...
It was not cut.
I'm sorry, that's 17 right next to you.
Yeah, so we kind of have to do that.
As you, as you were, sir.
The Police Department Vehicle Reserve, we talked about that, going down to two vehicles eventually, and...
Can I, because I didn't do that the other night when we were talking about Jason's vehicle. It's always been a little stickler on my point about, we get closer to the mic, to try to get as much money as we can for the town. The vehicle that the Police Department just got rid of last, we got $10,000 for a trade. The dealer, who I've dealt with over the years, said retail was 18,000. He said, "You, if you sold it yourself, could get 14 to 15 all day long," and they sold it to an employee for 12.5. So we could have possibly made another 4,000 to put into a reserve, but we didn't want to take on the responsibility of being a used car dealer. Well, I mean, you know, you have to sort of weigh the best interest of the taxpayers, and if we can make four more thousand to put into a reserve, we ought to consider doing that ourselves.
I'm sorry, was this a police or a fire alarm?
A police vehicle. But that's, I meant to mention that the other night, but we're not...
I know, for, for most of the years Mark was there, we did sell the cars on our own, as opposed to trading. And it's a, it's a, it's a weighing the money versus the time to do it. And I know Randy's...
He's never parking much right on the street. Just put your craps.
I think we had the last one that I was there, we had sold within, I mean, yes, you're advertising it. It took a little work for Stacy to put it out there, but yet, you know, within, within two weeks, you had it sold and you made, you know, so, and you get a cleaner price for your new one. My whole point is, you know, we're sort of giving away money, even though it's a little bit.
Yeah. Well, I guess I would, I mean, my thought on that is, let's see what the next manager and the chief want to do. We're not going to be selling one this year, I don't believe, so...
And I thought, I know we did discuss last year's whether or not we were going to drop one car. And I don't recall, did we actually decide that and take it out of the...
Well, the, the vehicle replacement schedule that's in our budget shows only two vehicles.
Okay.
And we still have three. And Randy had said that he was going to use the oldest vehicle as a backup for some period of time. And I don't, at some point, that will become, you know, he'll get rid of it.
Yeah, when the trade comes up next year, then he'll take the oldest one and put it out to...
Right, but it's, that's, that's something we'll have to talk about next year, because if we have three, if we still have three vehicles, the replacement schedule shows only two vehicles on it, the cruiser and the SUV. And that's in the Police Department. And I've argued for the last couple of years, because the chief has a car from Camden, that we don't need three police vehicles anymore. So, but I go back to that by saying, I don't think we need to add the money back into the reserve, because the plan was sound without it. The radio reserve, the two radio reserves, police and fire, I thought that the explanations of not funding those were okay when we went through the budget process. I see nods over here.
Do we have, do we still have an officer splitting radios, or did that get resolved?
We have purchased the radios. They're not here. It's serious budget.
That's right. That was this year. That was two days ago.
And as an aside, like, the whole county has to figure out, the whole state has to figure out our radios.
And there's a possibility of some grants to cover some of that. And when that big change in digital comes, at least that's the way I understood. The Fire Department Vehicle Reserve is basically, that's following the schedule, and it's well-planned out for at least 10 years, I think.
And we kept that in.
Yes, that's kept in.
So you're going to put the radio reserves back in? Is that the idea?
No, I don't think so. I think we were told during the budget development that they were, it was okay not having them in.
Okay.
Harbor Boat Engine Boat Hull Reserve, those were small amounts. I think, I didn't hear any noise from Abby, that they were needed necessarily. Harbor Float Reserve, we have kept in there. That's, that's again, a schedule that has been developed. The Capital Campaign Committee had a lot to do with that, and so then that's been left in, and I think that's all right. Feel free to jump in. I'm running through these things if anyone disagrees.
Can someone, has anyone in the town applied for float reimbursement grant things? I only bring it up because South Thomaston did it, and we were...
That's where we got most of the floats built.
Okay, cool. Because we got through the state, and they, they reimburse us for a healthy amount.
Right, the ship grant, that got us a lot.
A lot of that, yeah. Okay, awesome.
Harbor Building Reserve, again, I don't remember.
What's the, and I'm looking, and I don't see, on page 61 and 2 have the harbor stuff, but where's the...
The Building Reserve is a new one, so I apparently missed it when I...
What's the number, is there a number in there that we have, and this will add to it, or is this the only?
Which one are you talking about, Mark?
Building Reserve.
The Harbor Building Reserve.
That, I mean, in my...
We deposited $3,700 this fiscal year, so it's got a balance of 3,750.
That's one that I think, you know, we don't have any money set aside, and that building is getting older. You know, so we're getting to the point where, you know, at some point, we're going to have to face reshingling and...
So we, we have 3,750 in there, and we're considering putting another...
3,750.
3,750.
The Department can be in...
I, I know.
How old's that building?
Yeah, I think it's about 20 years old. Yeah, I think it's about 20. I think it was back...
Yeah, I bought my house 20 years ago, and it wasn't there.
If it's 20, it's hidden.
It was a Don Willig era, 97, eight, somewhere in there.
Does it make sense to not just label it as Building Reserve, but Harbor Park Reserve or something? Because in addition to that building, you've got all those picnic tables and, you know, all the covers, the roofs and...
We can certainly address that when we make the changes to the reserve policy, but right now, as it stands, it's reserved.
That's fine.
I'd like to go back up two lines to the motor and the hull. The, the, the building itself and the park benches and all that, like, the worst thing that could happen to a building that would demand immediate attention would be leaky roof or ingress of water. But if the, if the engine poops the sleeping quarters, you have to do something right off. And I think that's, you know, it's scheduled out to be a 15-year for that engine, I think. But engines are hideously expensive.
Yeah, we just replaced it two years ago. We do.
So we have two outboards. I mean, clearly you don't want to put a 15-foot Carolina Skiff outboard on an Andre, but...
No. Yeah, that's only a 9.9, I think, and the other one is 150, I think. But the other ones are, it's, I think we replaced it two years ago.
Yeah, that's right.
Alright, so, I'm just making noise on Abby's behalf.
Yeah, and putting those back, I mean, those are small amounts of money, is, you know, the, the hull is one thing. That hull is, it's aluminum hull. It's not going anyplace fast. But the engine, from the day we turned it on, it's wearing out. And, you know, having a plan to replace it makes sense.
Okay. So I'm hearing that the Harbor Boat Engine is something we might want to consider putting back in.
Isn't there a, sorry, isn't there a balance of 9,700 in it?
That's the hull, I think.
The engine has 53,800. I'm looking at the wrong one.
Again, on the Harbor Building Reserve, I didn't hear much from Abby. She thought that was that important. We can certainly think about maybe putting a smaller one or something.
Which page is the Building Reserve on?
We started doing the Harbor Building Reserve to reshingle the roof.
And it's not in there. It's not there.
Oh, okay.
It just was this year.
Oh, so this is, it's starting a new reserve?
Well, there's, it was started this budget year, so there'll be $3,700 in it at the end of this budget year, and then whatever else we decide to put in there. Public Works Equipment Reserve, again, I didn't hear much from Mike about that, that I recall. I mean, there's always money to spend on...
That's one that I, that's one that, that I would consider putting back. If, if there's one that needs to get put back, I would put that one, one of those back.
Which ones?
The, the...
Public Works.
Public Works Equipment Reserve, because when his, when his stuff goes bad, it's expensive.
Didn't you have one that the trucks break down in the middle of 17 or something like that?
No, no.
In the middle of the road?
Yeah. But when it does go bad, it's expensive.
So what this reserve can be used for is if they break a plow and they need to buy a new one mid-winter, they could use this. If they had to buy new cutting edges because of road issues or whatever, they could use this money. If it's not something they can make up and ever do.
Right now, there's 77,000 there.
Uh, there's 27,000.
27,000.
Oh, 27,000. That's where we had to...
27,500.
77,000?
That was where the money for the Oshkosh repair came from. So 27,000. Okay, so that one's worth consideration. The Limekill number, we seem to talk about a bond for that.
Where, I mean, I, that's another, I don't, it's not listed in the pages, is it?
That's because it's a new one proposed in the 1920 budget.
And there's no money in there currently for that?
It doesn't exist.
Doesn't exist.
Well, some of these other ones didn't, yes, I'm...
The Pathways Reserve, we talked about, I think there was pretty general agreement that we wanted to see that return, to complete the maritime farms pathway.
There's currently 37.
We've already invested money there, so...
Yeah, that's...
So that, that's where that money is coming from.
Part of it. Part of it, yeah. Well, actually, all the, the 25,000 is, and then where's?
Is that everything that's in there now?
It's 37,000.
Thirty-seven thousand plus the 25, we'll pay our bill for that, plus or minus.
That's a decision we should make.
Yeah, I think we kind of, kind of made that one the other night. Opera House Building Reserve. I don't think you can ever have enough money in the Opera House.
I have that listed as my number one priority, because, I mean, we, that, that air conditioning unit is working on borrowed time. And, you know, we've been able to hold it together and hold it together and hold it together, but, you know, it, it'll get to the point where one day it's not working and we won't be able to fix it.
And we have 92,000 in there?
Yeah.
Yep.
Air conditioning system, they told us the other night, it'd be 150, 125 to 150, I think.
I hope that endowment gets started early.
And when it, it, it won't go now, it'll go on the hottest day in the summer when we have a bunch of concerts coming up.
Town meeting time.
Yeah, yeah.
That would be handy, that would be handy.
How can it be that hot there in town meetings?
It will be.
Depends on the topic.
Three times out of the year to where it's slightly.
Recreation reserve, I don't remember. Just there's gonna be 41,000 in that. Was that, is that the tennis court number?
So, maybe I'll use this opportunity to, to just kind of let some of the board members know. When you start talking about reserve accounts, make sure that you have clarity about what that's for, because people had looked at the recreation reserve account as though it was for the tennis courts, which every time money was deposited within, it was, oh yeah, it's for the tennis courts. Yet, when we got into a bind and Marge Jones was kind of deteriorating, I went and started researching. There's absolutely no language that says this is for this item. And so, if you wanna put constraints around a reserve, you gotta do it in writing and agree upon it, 'cause as it stands right now, it could be for tennis courts, it could be for the roof at the awning at the Glenn Cove turnout, because that's a park. You know, it's, so, with some of these reserve accounts, if you've constrained it, you've constrained it. If you haven't and you're putting it in for the tennis courts and it's just in people's brains, there's nothing that says you can't take it out and put it to a ball field.
Yeah, I remember somebody who raided it a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Successfully changed.
Yeah, he was annoying once.
But every meeting, every discussion, every deposit was made, it was always, this is for the tennis courts.
You never had any language.
Right.
Say, just a, just a clarification, 'cause I, I genuinely don't understand. We have money already in the reserve for, for recreation and we're trying to figure out how we can afford the, the irrigation and the ballparks, couldn't, couldn't.
You're going down the path of, the money was there to rebuild the tennis courts and that's, it was.
But those have been rebuilt, right? I mean, they were.
They were just resurfaced.
Resurfaced.
Short-term repairs, yeah, and I think the, I think the, because it's been so long since we've done it, I think the price is up to what, 75,000 or something now?
Yeah, you gotta build an escalator in there, because I think the quote from Steven Beveridge back in the day was like, oh, it's 70,000 dollars to do the tennis courts.
I think it was 50, actually.
And then, when I came back and I was saying, hey, I want this reserve money, they said, well, we need it for the tennis courts, we're almost there. Mike got another quote and it was up to like 100,000 dollars to do the same thing that we had a quote for 50 or 60 for.
So I guess I have, I guess I have two points. One is, you just said that it's actually, not actually specifically for tennis courts.
Correct.
So we could rate it.
In Owen's mind.
Even though what our intention was.
It's not clearly defined.
Right, and then the other thing is, like, we do have these reserves that might be able to provide us a, a little bit of relief on other, in all of our other budgets, if we're talking about capital items and we have reserves in place.
Well, yeah, you gotta be a little careful about that, because there are, some of the reserves are better defined than the recreation one, and there are plans to use them, and that's why you have a reserve account. It's basically, a big ticket item, you can, just like a car, you know, you build, you can save your money over four years and then take your cash to the car dealer and buy the car, or you can get the car dealer to give you the car and you sign a note and you pay on it, so that's the same thing with towns. You know, we can put money in a reserve account and save it for something, or we can bond it out and pay for it after the fact.
What I'm saying is, this might be the rainy day.
And it's also.
This might be the rainy day where we've been saving for.
They kinda fall into two different categories, so if you look at the fire department vehicle reserve, one, it's constrained to fire department vehicles, and two, it's based on the vehicle replacement schedule and a known increases on costs, it's very well thought out. With your recreation one, it's more of a, holy cow, we didn't know a storm was coming through, we didn't have insurance on whatever, we're in a bind, and then you go and you grab 15,000 out of it, so they're, they're kinda for two general purposes, specific purposes.
Also, my feeling on this is, when you're doing a reserve account, today's residents are paying for the depreciation of the courts, the, the fire trucks or whatever, as opposed to actually borrowing money and having future residents pay for that. So it's a philosophical way on how you wanna finance that.
I never thought about that.
Yeah, it's, it's, neither way is perfect, and I've had that discussion before, because, yeah, you're saying, okay, you know, I'm gonna live in town for two more years here, and, and so I'm gonna vote for the million dollar bond, because I'm not gonna have to pay it after that.
So that's why you're not running again.
He's gonna pass all the bonds and move on.
But you're right, you know, the other, the other thing is, okay, I'm, I'm putting money into my taxes to pay for something, but I'm planning on moving out in a few years and I'm not gonna see the benefit for it. I think there's a balance that you strike.
But you've had that benefit all the time, you lived here from.
Yes, exactly what I was gonna say. If I'm here for 10 years, like, and I, and we bond it, I get to use it for 10 years, rather than at the end of that 10 years, finally have enough to have new tennis courts.
Right, right.
And then you turn around and move, and so you paid for it and you don't get to use it.
Of course, with the bonding too, you have the interest cost.
Right.
So you're, you do have that.
Which, which is then, the counter to that is, what's gonna be the cost of the tennis court in five years when we finally have enough?
Right.
It's gonna be.
That's, that's what happened.
Always chasing.
We're chasing that number.
Never quite enough to get where you need to be.
Which is almost why the kind of vehicle replacement schedule is the more well thought out reserve account, 'cause it builds in increased costs. We know it's gonna be 10 years from now, we gotta up it.
Yeah, that, that schedule has worked very well. I mean, our, in, in, in six years, we've bought two, two fire trucks. And the, in, the impact on the mill rate, you know, we, there was no spike in the impact of the mill rate because of those fire trucks, because it's been built into that budget for so many years, and the same thing at Public Works. We're cycling out ton trucks, big trucks, this year we'll have, this, this year's budget, I think, has a, has a front-end loader and a one-ton in it. And it, there's not a big jump in the budget because of that. So those, those schedules have worked very effectively for, for the past 10 or 15 years, that's, that's. And, and our equipment is in really good shape. We don't have pieces of equipment that we're, we're cobbling together, holding together with MacGyver-like, you know, strategies to keep it going. You know, our equipment's in great shape. We don't have breakdowns on the side of the road typically.
So, back to the recreation reserve, I'm ambivalent about that one.
I think we have neglected the field and things in the past. I think it would be worth putting in.
To be honest, from all my time with the recreation folks, if you're gonna put it back in, you might wanna put it into the budget versus a reserve account, because of, we're, we're still clawing our way out of some of that maintenance stuff.
Okay, no.
But just, you know, maybe not the full 25, but.
No, it's 37,50.
But we cut, you know, we did cut, I can't remember what I cut out of the recreation budget.
Oh, the zero-turn mower was a big one.
And that one, I don't.
And I don't, I'm not, I'm not.
I'm not.
Currently, just process check, we're currently pondering these changes, not making decisions on them. Right, exactly, but we're trying to gauge the group's, yes, you know, temperature on these various things.
Well, if you're going to put it back into the budget, then you might look at the irrigation maintenance, which is 36, 26.
Well, I think we can think about that as well. I, I think we wanna, I think, confine this discussion to the reserve deposits, 'cause we're gonna look at the individual budgets and think about adding something in as well.
I think what Owen was saying, instead of putting the money back in here, think, think about.
They could use it, they could use it better now than in a couple of years.
Okay.
Which is what I'm building on.
And I, I would tend to agree with that.
If you're not gonna put it in, in reserve, put it in for the irrigation.
The, the last one is the cemetery reserve, and I would like to consider that one, at least part of it.
Yeah, I think we.
Especially since we, we found a little more money in the, in the investment accounts and we're working on the column area, and I think that is something.
And that, and that might, in, in eavesdropping on some of that, that extra with what we're considering might take care of the, the total for that.
I don't think that much would, but, but anyway, all I'm saying is, I don't know that we'll be able to put the whole 20,000 in, but I think we should consider putting at least a chunk of it back.
Before we put that in, there's 57,500 so far that's gone back.
Yep.
Well, it hasn't gone back yet.
They haven't voted again.
Okay, discussed.
Yeah, right. So we've, we've done that and that's about, well, if it's 57,500 or whatever it is, that's, well, there's, actually, there's 50, there's 70, probably 80,000 and some change, whatever, so it's about half of what was, what was cut out.
Well, I have a question. Back up all the way to the top line, the accrued benefits reserve. What's the fact that Rick is leaving going to affect that, and then we've got a new incoming person? And I was under the impression that the accrued benefits reserve was to sort of cover any sick leave, vacation time that Rick had not used in his.
So I included those estimates in the post-employment benefits page, it starts on page 65 and the calculations are on page 66.
So new wages that you pay, the difference in wages you might pay a new manager wouldn't be in this line, it's only for, you know, paying me out and any other, anybody else that retires.
But you're retiring before the, this budget comes in, so do we, how much do we, do we need that 55,000 in there?
You do, yeah.
Yes, if you look on page 66.
It's not just me.
There's.
It's not just you, okay, okay.
There's, we estimated two employers' retirements for 20,516, which would include Rex's payout benefits, but that still leaves us an unfunded liability of 194,000.
My mistake, I did not read that correctly. Thank you.
Okay, well, this is a helpful discussion, I think this'll help us when we. Megan, the, the list of cuts to meet LD1 and the projects that are still in there, those two pages right there are most helpful.
You can see.
They will shorten our conversations up considerably.
Yep.
And the process, yeah, everything, all this, this is great work, and on top of cooking dinner. Okay, I think we're all set for tonight, thank you all very much, this was a good discussion. We're well positioned to move forward here.